Mr. Roser, are you ready? All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's budget meeting for Tuesday, August the ninth, starting promptly at 4:00 P. M. Okay. And first item of the agenda, of course, having now called the meeting to order, discussion of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three City McAllen Budget. Mr. City Manager, take it away.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem, members of the Commission, we are going to be following this book that we left off with last week, and we should be able to go in order, starting with tab number ten, which is Public Works, with a couple of exceptions. So we would like to leave the airport presentation for last, because we have an executive session that we would like to discuss with you. That was number one. Then, number two, I was going to bring this up last week, and I failed to do so. There was a request, there is a request, I'm sorry, from S T C for a new program that they're doing. We're not going to discuss it today, because it's out of, it would be out of the Development Corp., but I want to give you a copy of it, so you have time to review it before we meet for Development Corp. a week from Thursday. So you've got a week to review it. It's a detailed proposal.
Is the media here?
Maybe it's not here. I'm sure they're listening.
Nope.
It is, it is rich, okay? So don't be surprised when you see it. I mean, I feel it's rich. However, if you think it's something you want to do, we can definitely program it. So I want to give you a copy of it, and then discuss it next week. So if you're okay with that, we can go ahead and start with Public Works. Is that okay, Mayor?
No problem.
Yes, sir. All right, Elvira.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to really say that I'm grateful, Public Works is extremely grateful, not only to Roy, but the entire budgeting team. I know they were really hard behind the scenes, and this fiscal year, they were extremely generous from Public Works, approving all the items that we requested. And so I want to take this opportunity, again, to let you all know that Public Works is extremely grateful, we're physically responsible, we're always running our budget very lean, and so for that reason, I'm extremely grateful again. So I want to go over a couple of things, just to share some good news.
Among the first things, can you, I'm sure you are, go through the actual summary, the fund balance summary?
That's exactly what I want to do.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so the sanitation fund balance remains really strong. Public Works has four funds, and among those four funds is the sanitation fund. It's currently really strong with two hundred and forty-four days of reserve fund balance of thirteen point seven million. The major impacts to the fund have been an increase in fuel, maintenance costs for vehicles and equipment, and an depreciation shortage of one million eighty-six thousand dollars. Part of what makes this successful, I want to share the recycle right program and how effective that program has been since we started it. Weeks recently developed a partnership with Coca-Cola Southwest and O I Glass Recycling Plant, both out of Mexico. They have helped us achieve a record-breaking year. This fiscal year, we're going to break a million dollars in sales. We've never done that before. The most we have done is eight hundred thousand in one year, so we're going to do one point one million. The commodity pricing, on average, right now, is a hundred and seventy-seven point seventeen dollars per ton. That is a hundred and seven percent higher pre-COVID. So the plastic, Coca-Cola is buying all our plastic, one and two. The plastic has gone from sixty dollars a ton to two hundred and thirty dollars a ton. It, we've gone from recycling a hundred and ninety tons to three hundred and sixty-five tons. That's a ninety-two percent increase over the last year. Now, the plastic pricing pre-COVID to now has increased by two hundred and eighty-three percent. So we're doing really well. We're blessed that we have the Mexican market buying from us. The glass remains at forty dollars a ton. It's been forty dollars a ton for the past four years. The difference today is that we're selling it to O and I, Recycling Plant of Monterrey. We're selling it without having to process it, so we don't have to pulverize it, they're buying it raw. This saves us a labor cost, and we went from forty tons a year to a hundred and thirty-seven tons. That's a two hundred and forty-three percent increase over the last year. So I just want to point that good news. Now, in terms of future plans for Public Works, we're looking forward to moving to the new composting facility. The current, we've got to move out by October twenty twenty-three. So we already started on the onsite improvements. We're currently working with Wallace, Mr. Wallace out there to buy the, the right-of-way to build a road, along with all the fiber and internet connectivity out there. We're more than likely going to have to do a septic tank and a water well, because there's no water or sewer facilities available out there. We're talking with N P U, they're going to help us with that. So we're also looking forward to purchasing additional property for Public Works and the expansion of it. We're looking at an administrative building to house Keep McAllen Beautiful, recycling staff, as well as an education area. We have that already earmarked. The funding for that is in twenty-three, twenty-four. You'll see a seven million dollar impact to the fund for that year. We're also looking at an upgrade to the internal recycling operations, not the, not the building itself, but the inside, the mechanical, which is what you approved yesterday at the City Commissioner meeting, to allow us to go with Engineering Services to look at improvements there. Another really, really big impact, not only to the sanitation fund, but all the funds throughout the city, has been the vehicle purchase. The purchasing of vehicle, vehicle, vehicles has become quite challenging. The market is so volatile now, that acquiring vehicles is taking an average of twelve to eighteen months for the delivery of the units. So therefore, we're proposing to purchase one year in advance, so, so that we can get ahead of the curve and allow us to order the vehicles. The impact to the funds, respective funds, will be when the vehicle gets here. We can earmark them, but the expense is not going to be until the vehicle is received. So that's one of the big things we're going to bring forward to you for approval. We're also looking at a, a rate increase for sanitation services, not this fiscal year, but probably next. We're going to do a study and do comparables with market. And the last thing I got is to make sure that you are aware that Public Works is ready to respond for hurricanes. So thank you very much.
You mentioned before at the end that you're looking at a rate increase possibly next year. I did, I heard earlier in the presentation, strong numbers, you know, two hundred and forty-some days, and I heard also, you know, you're selling at a higher rate. So I, I'm not sure where the rate increase is justified or necessary, I guess you could say.
Okay. So we're looking at a rate increase to the pricing of all vehicles, the pricing of the equipment, all, everything is going up. And so in order for us to maintain that, that, that cushion, the one hundred and twenty days of reserve fund balance, to make, to stay strong, we're going to have to look at some rate adjustments. And I'll bring that.
Was that happening during this budget?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. That's for future.
Okay. We'll deal with it then.
Yes.
You want to go through capital on your every division? Or are you finished?
Okay. I'm going to, I will, sir.
Okay, now it's up to the Commission.
Do you want any, any further discussion with regards to capital outlays?
No, I think it's very good.
Run a very tight ship.
Yeah, but congratulations. You guys are doing a lot. And what I hear out in the community that they're very happy with it, and kudos to you here, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And I have received a lot of compliments, specifically for those residents who have forgotten to put out their can on Tuesdays, and the subsequent pickup that day. They greatly appreciate that, I can tell you that. It's a wonderful service.
No, the black, the black bit.
Yeah, either one.
All right. If there's no questions, thank you again, Mrs. Alonso.
Thank you.
And we'll have the next person come up for the presentation.
Nine departments.
Who's next?
Sorry, management. The document I'm going to be using is the fund balance summary, which should be in your packages. And I'd like to start by pointing out that overall, the golf course is doing very, very well. We finished last year with a record-setting number of rounds, fifty-one thousand four hundred and forty-two. That is compared to what was typically done prior to the pandemic year, which was right around forty-four thousand. So it was a really good year, twenty twenty-one. I think that if we recall, moving into twenty-one, twenty-two, the big question was, well, how much of the play that we're now getting because of the pandemic is going to remain? And I'm here to say that my guess is that we've kept about seventy to eighty percent of that play. But nevertheless, the, the, the difference was offset when the borders opened and we were able to get our winter Texans back in town and people from Mexico back across. So having said that, this year, we're going to probably finish slightly ahead of fifty-two thousand rounds versus to the fifty-one thousand four hundred that we did last year. So all in all, the golf course continues to do very well. If you look at the revenue side, the revenues that are estimated for the current fiscal year were done back in March. And what we did is we took, again, not knowing what the future was going to bring, we took the actual revenue that we had generated from October through the end of February, and then plugged, just plugged in the budget numbers. Well, I can tell you that since then, we have exceeded our budget by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is that, as is the case with Public Works, the cost to operate has gone through the roof also, not through the roof, but it has gone up substantially. Couple of examples I can give you is the, the cost to purchase range balls. It went from four-ten, I believe, four fifteen per dozen that we were paying. Now, we're going to be paying close to eight dollars if you can get them, if you can get them. The golf carts that, thank God, you know, our, our price is secure. I was reading articles and emails from other operators where they're getting hit with ten percent increases on fleets that had been negotiated a year ago. The manufacturers are not going to deliver unless they pay the difference.
Yeah.
So the, the prices to operate, the cost to operate, has also gone up. But nevertheless, I estimate that we're going to be able to finish this year, as I said, pretty much about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars ahead of budget, somewhere in there, maybe even a little bit more, which is not reflected on the estimate.
Yeah, because I heard that the Simmeron next door is, is closing. So I'm thinking that they have two options, they go to Sherry, or they come over here. And I think we can get a, get a good share of those people to come, to come to this golf course. I have seen a couple of them already here.
Yes, yes.
So I, I think that's going to give us a good opportunity to get more, maybe memberships or, and green fees and stuff like that.
Yeah, we've been getting a lot of phone calls. We haven't sold a whole lot of memberships, but, but a lot of phone calls, information more than anything. We're such a totally different operation than a country club.
Definitely.
And so some of them are going to have to decide where they want to go, but we should be able to, to capitalize on, on that as well. I really believe someone's going to buy that place. I can't believe it's just going to shut down, but time will tell.
How many golf carts can we add?
Right now, we operate with a fleet of seventy, and we order a total of eighty with our next fleet.
So you're going to do a hundred percent replacement?
A hundred percent replacement, yes, sir, plus ten more.
Okay. And so in this current year, under golf carts, it was five seventy-two on the budget. Did we not buy them?
Well, we, we, they, it's the same case as Elvira. We don't pay for them until they're delivered, and they're going to be delivered first quarter of twenty twenty-three.
So it's more of a rollover capital?
Exactly. Exactly.
I assume you sell the old ones?
Yeah.
And that's why.
Yeah, we get a lot of them. How much do you get on a trade when you?
We got twenty-seven hundred dollars, I believe.
For you?
It was, it was either twenty-two or twenty-seven, I don't recall exactly, but it was a high, high number. A hundred and fifty-five thousand is what we, what we were going to get, nine-seventy, so about twenty-two hundred.
Yeah.
And what's the lifespan of most of the golf carts? We have an operation?
It is now three years.
Three years.
We, we're going to start rotating them, but every three years, we've rotated them, every four years prior to the increases in play.
Generally speaking, for the average player that does come out on a, on a frequent basis, do they notice the, or, or any comment about the fact that the golf carts are always kept newer, I suppose, even at, at the three, at the end of the third year?
Most of the time, the, the comments are positive. Right now, we're fighting a fleet that should have been replaced a year ago.
Oh, I see.
And so our seats are torn, and they got some rattles and stuff, but they all, every, all the batteries in every golf cart has been replaced, and so they run well, they just aesthetically don't look very well.
We get, you sell those carts, the old ones, right? Or, or trade-ins?
Yes, sir.
You get, you get a better trade-in when it's like a three-year-old than a four-year-old used car?
That is correct, yes, sir.
That, that's probably why you're changing from four-years to three-years?
Well, no, it's related more to the presentation of the new carts to the public and the wear and tear on them from the increase in play. We went up eight, nine thousand rounds from prior years, and over the course of the
More use?
Yes.
In, in the, in the, in the time span?
That is correct. Thank goodness, we're still getting as much water as we need. We use a hundred percent recycled water, so nothing's being restricted.
That's what I wanted to point out, so that everyone knows that we're using the recycled water from our plant in the south, okay?
One hundred percent, except for flower beds on this side of the golf course, parking lot around.
So we're able to maintain the course as best possible. Obviously, the heat is the heat, and it will have a wear and tear, but we are watering it, and it's because it's a hundred percent recyclable.
We are blessed to have that.
Yes, we are.
Any additional discussion?
So on the, on the budget, maintenance and operations is projected to go up, I think mostly due to what salary and wages and some other services. Are, so the salary and wages, are, are you hiring additional employees or?
No, sir. We're keeping exactly the same staff size. We may consider adding one to the night driving range or to the driving range division, but we're managing so far.
Oh, okay.
It's getting busy, and at times, it becomes a challenge when people are sick or on vacation, so on and so forth. But so far, we're, we're doing well.
I guess I was looking at prior year, twenty twenty-one versus?
Yeah, the, the big discrepancy comes in the carts. That's what's throwing everything off.
Capital, budget?
But everything else is pretty much the same, and I think on the maintenance and operations, the, the forty thousand dollar difference is because of the purchase of a P I system that's in the budget, a new P I system. And there is the forty thousand dollar difference.
Oh, okay.
Well, we could make it last twenty-three years, maybe we can make it last another twenty-three.
Yes, well, we might.
That's a very long period of time for a P I system.
Yes, sir. So the budget for next year is essentially the same as this year. What we did is we took, on the revenue side, we took the revenues that we had generated once again from October through the end of February, and then we consider history plus the current trend, and to project the March through September months, and that's how we came up with both the revenues and the expenses. Again, I think that the three, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar shortfall is mainly because of the golf carts, more than, and the P I system, more than anything else. If you take that out, then you would probably end up with a really, really balanced budget, pretty much right around zero.
Roy, on all the salary, oh, sir. I assume on the, on the last page, on the expenditure detail, salary and wages, those wages don't account for any proposed adjustment to salaries that?
We're not requesting any additions nor any changes on salaries, no, sir. There is no need. We're doing well.
No, my question was on, on the, on, on any department that submits or provides a summary on salaries and wages, that doesn't reflect the City Manager's recommendation for the salary adjustment, right?
No, you'll see that, it does show it. Yeah, but that's on page, oh, that's over here.
Oh, there, I see it. Now, I see it.
Yeah, if you go to the page that says Champion Lakes M and O, and go to the City Manager's recommendation, there's a figure of twenty-seven thousand two ninety-five, that's where it is.
Okay.
So it's already in there.
Very good.
So our budget is both in revenues and expenses, they're very similar, and again, our goal has always been to keep them balanced, and so we, we're pretty careful with that. We monitor closely during the course of the year and make, make adjustments if necessary. I think that the future for the golf course, if Simmeron remains closed, looks bright. We're going to have other challenges that may come up, but overall, things are looking really, really well. I think we need to just continue doing what we do every year, evaluate the data, adjust as necessary, and then move on for the next year, and just keep doing that.
I'm just glad you're updating the P I system.
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-six years?
I agree.
Any, any long-term capital improvement projects you're thinking about?
Yes, sir. I think that on next week's meeting with the Development Corporation, when the budget is presented to you guys, we're asking for two things. We're asking for an erosion control well for the lake that is between holes three and four, and we're also going to ask the monies to repair the bridge, the golf cart bridge that is very close to where road, and so those are the two main ones. I think long-term, you know, we need to, every year, we do one or two projects, but the big, big thing is going to be the replacement of the entire irrigation system, but that's not anywhere near.
Okay.
Maybe another five years.
Okay.
How about expanding the number of holes?
We've never, we, we have talked about that, but not in the last two years, in conversations with Mr. Veda, but I think that we should, we should continue to operate with eighteen until we're consistently hitting fifty-two to fifty-five thousand rounds. I think that is the number for this golf course, given the size of the greens and the tees, that if you go above that, you may reach that point of diminishing returns where the wear and tear on the golf course will not be able to keep up, even though you're increasing revenues. And so I think once we're there, fifty-five, we're close, but we're not quite there, then we would definitely need to consider looking at maybe nine more holes or even a golf course somewhere else, North McAllen, maybe.
I'm kind of curious to know, since originally Palmview had twenty-seven holes?
Yes, sir.
Did we ever, I mean, I don't know if you were around during that time or not, but does any, would you happen to know if, if we were already hitting fifty-five thousand back then?
Yes.
Huh? Oh, fifty-five hundred?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how many rounds they were doing. I know that the first year, actually, up until the pandemic, we were always between forty-three and forty-four thousand rounds every year. There was about a two or a three-year period where we were dipping a little bit. That was in the early, like, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, right around that area. But then they rebounded right back. You know, it's interesting, there is a lot of golf courses that have shut down in our area in the last twenty-three years. So we're fortunate to be where we're at, very, very blessed.
There are some courses that are really suffering because of lack of water.
There is no doubt. We had
Mid Valley golf courses are, are having their, their share of trouble.
We had a visit from friends from Monterrey, Mexico, a couple of weeks ago. They brought their superintendent over to look at our golf course, and that, it was horrifying to hear what they were going through because of lack of water, so I don't even want to know. Yes. They have no water.
Yeah, that's it? Not, not even for the primary necessities?
They're having to water the greens with a, with a water truck. Water the greens by hand just to keep them alive. Yeah, it's, it's, I don't even want to think about it. They may have to redo everything but greens, if not everything.
Anything else for the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veda.
We'll go to McAllen Metro.
I'll be presenting on the, on the three funds that comprise the transit and downtown services department. To start off with, I'd like to say that we were fortunate enough to get funded based on all of our requests, and so I'll go through that with each respective fund. The first fund is the Downtown Services Fund, that's a one-sixty fund. What I'll tell you, in that fund, there was, I'll make sure that everybody's on that, on the, on the page. So in that fund, we, we really didn't make any modifications to the budget, other than some line item adjustments, but not, not a change to the, to the final budget. I do, however, like, just like to bring to light, you know, we did have a little bit of a struggle during the pandemic, as you could see from the beginning, working capital of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. However, we've been able to bounce back, and we're going to continue to help increase revenues and, and be as efficient as possible to continue to grow our fund. And so, like I said, we, we, we've seen about an increase of twenty-two percent in revenues, and we've been able to increase efficiencies to tune up about eighteen, eighteen percent reduction in costs, so. Let me make sure that's, that's the Downtown Services budget. I don't have any questions in relation to the, to the budget.
All the cannabis per se that we're still missing in some areas in McAllen, are they already in the last budget, or you're putting someone into this one as well?
So Downtown, Downtown Services is, is only, I guess, let me go back a little bit. Downtown Services only manages the parking garage downtown and all the surface parking in, in the downtown area. About fourteen hundred metered spaces in the downtown area and in the, the parking garage. So this, this fund manages that, that operation. The bus shelters, as you're referring to, are part of the bus terminal budget, and we'll go over that in a second.
Okay.
The next fund is the Metro Fund, the five thousand The next fund is the metro fund, the 556 fund. That fund comprises of all operating costs for the, for the bus terminal and the metro transit system. In this particular fund, we did have an ask to increase the number of drivers, primarily because, if you recall sometime back, you guys approved a short-range plan that called for some service expansion. And so the increase in drivers is to carry out that service expansion that will be implemented in conjunction with the, our North Hub facility. So the route modifications, increase in service is related to that particular project, which will be coming in line hopefully at the third quarter of next year. And so, like I said, and if you look at the decision package, we did request an increase in drivers, which was approved. To account for that, we also increased the amount of fuel and lubricants for our vehicles to account for that service expansion. And again, this is just in operations for metro and industrial facilities as well as the new facility coming onboard.
Can you draw my attention to where you have the additional bus drivers?
Yes, if you look at the decision package form, it's a second page, the very top, transit operators. Yes, and it's funded at half year because, again, we don't anticipate to start the, the service expansion until the third quarter of next year.
I'm missing.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
So
What's going 13, McAllen?
13. This fund is funded in part by the F P A and in part by the development corporation. Prior to years, because of COVID, we did have CARES Act funding that was covered at 100%. So unfortunately, that CARES Act honeymoon stage is done. So we'll be going back to funding the fund how we were before, partially development corporation, partially F P A and Texas Department.
And most of the funding grants, it's 80, 20?
For the operations, it's 50, 50.
Oh, 50, 50.
Capital and maintenance is 80, 20.
20.
Very 20. And so, and so sometime back, we did modify the fund so that everything having to do with a 50, 50 reimbursement was in this fund. And then the bus terminal fund, which we'll go over next, has an 80, 20 match for those expenses. So if we're ready, I can move on to that, to that fund. So the, the bus terminal fund, like I said, accounts for all of our permanent maintenance for the facility as well as the vehicles that we operate, as well as all of our capital outlay. And so in this particular fund, we, we did receive our, all of our requests. The only adjustments that we added to the operations, which is maintenance, maintenance, was an additional 10,000 for the facility and to account for additional maintenance related to additional operating hours for the service expansion. So that was the only request in that regard. And then we do have capital outlay in total of 17,241,000. That capital outlay, however, we've been able to undertake without the use of local funds. We've been able to, to match federal dollars with transportation development credits from the Texas Department of Transportation. So all of the, the majority of the 14 million, the 17 million rollover projects that were currently underway. And then the two additional projects that we requested would also be using transportation development credits. It's right under $4 million, so the, there will be no local match for that required.
The South Pocket Ranch project, is that?
That project is going to be bid on in conjunction with the Quinta project.
Oh, that's right.
We've got the North Hub.
After this request for the three Gillette buses, though, all the buses have now been replaced?
So the, this request is for vehicles that are going to meet a useful life in two years. However, there's an 18-month lead time, so we want to order them next fiscal year so that they get here when, you know, when the other ones are meeting their useful life.
So you're pulling an El Vida Blue, huh?
Yeah, I mean, the
No, no, I agree.
The lead time used to be 12 months, but because of, because of the pandemic, it's now as much as 18 months as now. So we want to order them next year so that they get here in time to, once the other ones meet their useful life.
Completely understand.
And so, again, those will be with transportation development credits, so no, no local match. That's the gist of our budget request for next year. I'll entertain any questions.
Well, for information purposes, what, what do you mean by transportation development monies? So that everybody can hear.
Sound like, how would you call it? Is this just fake money? It's, it's a credit that the, that the Texas Department of Transportation provides. So, so basically, the way that it works is, you know, let's say $100,000 is a project, is a project cost. Typically, the funding mechanism with F T A is 80% F T A, 20% local. Texas, what they do is they match it with credits. So it's not cash, it's just, it's just a credit they apply to that. And so we, we end up spending $100,000 of federal monies matched by credits. And so it's just, it's just a, like I said, a credit, it's not cash. But it's a mechanism that, that agencies use so that they don't have to require a local match of 20%.
So cash-wise, we're not out of cash. We use credit? I, I'm trying to
Cash, cash-wise, we use all F T A money. So, so we, when we get the, you know, when we get the invoice, we pay 100% with F T A money. And then we just apply the credits as, you know, as a, as a form of showing that there was a, a match. It's the best way that I can, that I can explain. But it's not considered cash. So the full amount is, is a federal, a federal fund.
Money gets there, but in, in both ways, cash and credits.
And then just, the, the shelters are in this, in this budget. The shelters, 368,000 is a rollover project that, that will be undertaken next year to add additional, additional shelters throughout, throughout the city. What we do is our buses are equipped with, with technology that allows us to see where people are getting on and off. And so part of the short-range plan that was approved had some service, service measures. And in order for a shelter to be deployed, there has to be at least 20, 20 onboarding or disembarkings in that particular stop for, for a shelter to be, to be considered.
Do you think we'll, our usage will become more and more or more used once we get our north terminal going and?
Right, so the, the biggest thing with, with the expansion is for, for the history of the system, we've been on an hour headway, meaning that the bus goes by every hour. What makes systems, other systems more attractive, like in bigger cities, is, is the frequency. So whether it's 30 minutes, 15 minutes. And so the redesign calls for some shortened headways in, like, for example, 23rd and 10th Street. So instead of the bus going by every hour, it'll go by every 30 minutes. And so hopefully that'll attract additional riders that don't solely depend on public transit. That may have the, the option, but, you know, the fact that it's a little more convenient will hopefully get them to, to use some transit systems.
Is, is a stop on Taylor Road being considered? I know we go to Benson, right, obviously?
Some areas of Benson.
But in the future, you know, with the expansion of Taylor Road, would be considered Taylor?
So, yeah, so one of the things that we're also doing is we're revisiting the, the short-range plan that was, that was approved because COVID kind of made some changes in, in the, in the market. So we want to make sure that what we deploy is, is base, is basically what, what's now needed based on, on some changes due to COVID. For example, we have the microtransit that's now on the northwest quadrant, which does account for some, some areas of Taylor Road.
So it doesn't, so that Micro McAllen doesn't come south of New Havana, right?
No, it, it doesn't.
Ah.
Yeah, and so we, we will, again, again, we will, we will visit the areas. And what, what they do is they, is they look at densities to see where we, we might need to deploy additional services. So part of that exercise, and we'll, we'll bring it to you here pretty soon so that you know what we're doing. Part of that exercise is look at, look at different areas of town to see where we need to deploy additional services based on that density or that need. And so we'll certainly be evaluating, you know, the city as a whole to see where additional service is needed. Again, it's, it's, it's a costly service and it's, it's it, the, the rider doesn't pay for the service, right? The fare does not cover the cost to operate the service. So we have to be very fiscally responsible in what we do on services to ensure that we
But, but we also, we also have to have in mind that, that we have certain residents with certain needs. And we might not get that 20 threshold that you look, guys look for. But there's veterans, there's handicapped people that, that go ahead and get those services and they don't have it in a shade to be, we are in 110 degrees, guys. So I know we have to be conservative fiscally, but also we have to accommodate, you know, for those individuals to be safe, you know, and, and try to, you know.
Right, and if, if there's a specific case that we, that may, we may need to consider, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah.
Obviously, obviously, we, we built the parameters to make sure that it's equitable and to make sure that there, that, you know, the need is there. But if there's a special circumstance, we're certainly
Let's look into it.
Where's Micro McAllen on your budget?
I'm sorry?
I was just gonna, I was, I was gonna ask, where's, where's Micro McAllen on, on the budget? Where, where's like the income and expense that comes out of Micro McAllen?
So Micro McAllen is part of the operating budget, the metro fund that we, that we talked about for the 556. There is, there's a line item for professional services. So purchase transportation and all that stuff is, is in, is in there.
Okay. But to Omar's point, yes, we ought to be looking to the west, Taylor Road. And as we are growing to the west, that's our growth. We need to try to secure an area, or areas for future stops. And maybe even parking areas where they can park and then get, get on a bus. Because that's going to be our growth, northwest.
Oh, that is a, yeah, I agree with you.
So look, look, yeah, look at areas we might be able to work with.
Especially the 600 block of North Taylor Road.
I'll have your conflict forum. And for me, too.
With the $368,000 that we've got for shelters, we'll, we'll be able to purchase between 25 and 30.
In terms of the, kind of going back off Commissioner, that question on shelters, I guess now two years ago, two and a half years ago, you did a nice workshop presentation and how you were going to evaluate and consider the canopies and I think in some cases even the trash can and all that. In terms of percentage-wise of complete, what you had projected or would look at, where are you in terms, percentage-wise, more or less, in terms of completion?
Yeah, so, so the, the target was about between 10 and 20 shelters per year. We've done 10 this year. If, if we, so we're surveying the system on a regular basis. And if another shelter pops up for me, then, then we, you know, we'll deploy it. And then hopefully we can, we can do about 20 per, per year.
Per year, okay.
We also have the, the program where a business can adopt a shelter. The biggest, I guess, cost of the shelter, and the capital is a one-time thing, but then it's, it's the maintenance, make sure that, that the trash is picked up, that, that the shelter is maintained, that we, if there's grass, we mow around the grass, the, around the shelter. So that, you know, takes a, you know, additional monies that's reoccurring. If there's a business willing to adopt a shelter, whereas they pay for 20, the 20% match, and then they maintain it, we'll be happy to consider a shelter even if it's not, if it doesn't meet the parameters. So we also do have that program, which, which again, we'll be, we'll be pushing to the, to the community to make sure that, again, if, if, if there's need for additional shelters or desire, that we, that we can get those out there. I mean, we understand that, that that is something that, that we want to put out there for the, you know, the benefit of our, of our life.
Without having a nitpick and it's just more of a commentary, I know there was one location off Ware Road just south of Pecan in the area, the H E B part. And I think that had been, H E B grocery store rather. And it was explained that there was a right-of-way issue that really was like a stumbling block to overcome to, to get. You know, I'm not talking the one on Pecan itself, because that one is, is already there. But there was one across to the west, I think. And I don't know if there's been any progress on that, but maybe at a later time you can go and send a reporter through our, our weekly number. Anything else? Commissioner, come this to the back.
Military? Yep, any of those shields still in, in military?
With military?
Yeah, we have one right by the S T C. It's a fairly new
Oh, that's on Ware, that's on Ware Road, no, on Milit, on Military.
No, it's on Military. There's one on Ware Road, on the corner of Ware, just, just north of Military. And there's one on Military just west of
By the school?
Yeah. I don't think we have, we, we've surveyed, we currently don't have the, the density there, but, but we'll reveal it.
People that will work at the progress terminal.
Yeah, you might be able to get participation for them to have one and they maintain their work. That, that would be smart on, that would be smart on their part. And incidentally, he's done well with some of the, the federal funds that have come into that area. So I would, I would approve some of that over for a spot there.
Anything else? Thank you, Mike. Next up.
Toll Bridge.
We can start off with the Anseldeus International Bridge? So this fiscal year, we're estimating to end up with $3.7 million in vehicular tolls and 454,500 in southbound truck toll revenue. The totals for that is 4.2 million compared to our budgeted amount of 3,21,012. So we're over budget by 1.1 million dollars in tolls.
Wow.
We opened our bridges in November of this year, so Anseldeus did very well. For this upcoming year, we're forecasting our toll revenues, or our budgeted to be 4,74,240. That's a 35% increase from our budget amount of 2021, 2022. It's an aggressive figure, but I think it's a figure that we can hit.
You just said differently.
Go down a miscellaneous.
Are you using the summary?
Yeah, for this, the fund balance summary?
What was their fund number, 580?
It's 580. We're including on that the facilities rental miscellaneous interest and all that. I'll just have the toll revenue and the, and the trucks. If you add
My, my summary isn't
So if you add this, if you add this, the highway tolls in the southbound commercial amount, that comes out to 4,202,000 and 77. And for this coming year, the budget is, is, if you see the numbers here, it's 3,619,740 and 454,500. When you add those two, it comes out to 4,74,000. When you come down to facilities rental, we're keeping it at 12,204. We have three spaces out there that duty-free are leasing out. And it's, it's We have three spaces out there that duty freeze are leasing out and it's, it's, uh, two spots are leased out, so that's what we get. If you see below on miscellaneous, that item is what we use to do vessel conversions. So we collect vessels and then we work with the vessel house to do the, uh, the conversions of vessels to dollars and that's our vessel gain. So in it, we, this year we had budgeted 190,797. Our estimated amount coming in is 87,704. For the new fiscal year, we're requesting the amount to be 40,797. And the reason is because we get a lot of people from Monterrey, Nuevo Leon, and they usually are paying more with dollars rather than vessels. So it's a very volatile, uh, category, so just thinking of going conservative on that, on that amount. So going down to our bridge operating expenses, we're gonna be ending up the, uh, the year below budget at 339,880. Our budget amount was 531,529. This fiscal year, we're requesting the budget to reflect 511,462. Everything remains the same and we're not asking for any changes. On administrative expenses and general, general insurance, we're estimating to end up the year below budget with 482,422. Our budget was forecasted to be 700,338. So for fiscal year 2023, we're requesting to end up at 674,652. Any questions on the Anseldeus budget?
Very well.
So now, if we can, I'll ask you to turn to budget 560, which is the McCullen Ed algo budget. That's the monster one.
That's the monster.
Someone in the city gets the money out of it.
Toll Bridge.
Or like someone says, the money cow or the-
Cash cow.
Cash cow, there you go.
Cash cow.
So this fiscal year, we're estimating to end up at 9.573,423 in toll revenues compared to the budgeted amount of 10,917,471. Our restrictions were lifted November of this year. So we're requesting that this coming year, we remain with the same budget at 10,917,471. I think with the additional month in that, we should be able to hit that, that amount. On rents and royalties, that we rent to GSA out there and we are estimating this year to end at 2.691 million. We had budgeted 2,676,000. We had a slight increase because of some additional services that GSA had. So this year, we're, we're just keeping it at the lease amount, which is 2,642,574.
When, did GSA renovate their facility or the facility of leasing promis, about four, five years ago? Was there like a renovation?
They did some increases and then they, they would pay lump sums for the-
Oh, they paid us to do the renovation, okay, got it.
Yes, yes. And we're talking about probably in the future, adding some, a gun range and whatnot, because all that adds to the revenue and we did, they do have space, so, so they sell that, what used to be the own port, import lot, they have a lot of space out there to do a, a lot of stuff, so all that will add to the, to the budget. Here on the miscellaneous account, this is, this is what I was talking about on, on the vessel gain. Here, uh, we deal with a lot of people that live in Reynosa and they do pay with vessels. As you can see, um, our budget was 105,000 for the year. We're estimating to end up this year at 110,801 of, of gain. And so for the upcoming year, we're requesting for that amount to remain the same at 105,000. When it comes to the bridge operating expenses, we're estimating to, to be below budget at 2.2 million, 2,256,433. Our budget was 2.6 million. And for this coming fiscal year, we're not adding or changing anything, so we're requesting that the budget remain the same at 2,666,601. Same thing with our administration expenses and general insurances. We're gonna end the year below budget at 732,867. Our budget was 836,989. And we're not adding or changing anything, so we're, we're asking for it to remain the same. 800.7 million, that's right. Any questions?
Any questions to the board?
Oh, good.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your question.
Okay, lastly, we're gonna have Liz. Liz, you ready? That's the last one, right? Yeah, we can do outside, you can do-
Good afternoon. I'm ready whenever, before. A real quick recap of our working capital summary. Overall, we took the estimated budgeted amount for revenues and used that as our baseline for next year. Understanding that we've had quite a substantial growth in passenger traffic and we don't want to be overly liberal with that estimate. We're assuming that, you know, some of the challenges that we're dealing in terms of pilot shortage and high fuel costs, we can analyze that, posing out the year will continue along the trend lines that we've seen to date. And so with that in mind, we saw an overall increase in what is estimated for revenue this year of about 11%. And that's an overall increase from the actual number in 2021. And then what we're forecasting for the next fiscal year is no change. I will remind everyone that we just recently approved a new airline contract. We are anticipating about an 18% in aeronautical revenue next year and in year two, that should grow to about a 30%, so up to about a million dollar impact to our aeronautical revenue flow. We're really excited about that. We did not take that into account this year because we did not know exactly how that was gonna pan out for us. When we look at overall estimates and what is reflected for next year, it's about a 7% growth in aeronautical revenue. And so that's again, keeping in mind that we've got more narrow-bodied aircraft coming in, more mainline aircraft. Remember, landing fees and jet bridge fees are all assessed by weight of aircraft, so more weight is more money. That's where we're seeing that 7% increase. In addition to that, we were really excited to see about an 8% increase in non-aeronautical revenue. The majority of that growth coming from our feed and beverage concession sales. And then that was followed by our terminal retail and our terminal advertising program, which both fair about in the 15% range growth rate. So we're really excited about that. Again, you'll see that aeronautical revenue, aeronautical activity is colectively aligned with non-aeronautical revenue. Remember, if all of those are growing, the trend lines will grow on the non-aeronautical revenue side. At the end of the day, for us, it's been a great year. We're ending the year about 11% higher than what we had anticipated for last year's budget. So we're excited about that. When we look at compensation, we've pretty much over the last few years really identified a really solid baseline. And so you're not gonna see a lot of fluctuation in compensation or in any of our general supplies. This year, we did have a substantial impact in terms of what we contribute to general funds. So we pretty much doubled that from about 1.1 million to about 2.1 million. Again, we're really proud of that. For us, it's really fair, the way that we approached our leasing tactics, the CROD strategy with the airlines, was that we really need to be partners in sharing costs. And we really believe that that additional million that they're gonna pay covers more of our law enforcement costs associated with the airport operation, as well as more of our, our fire expenses that we have associated with the administration at the airport. So we're very proud of that. At the end of the day, the projects that we have brought forward in this 550 fund are simple projects. We've increased our, our marketing projections by just slightly. We wanna add a few more campaigns this year. I think during wrap-up, the city manager's gonna allow us to bring to you all about a half million dollar request in added marketing dollars. Again, I mean, I think using a lot of the feedback that we're getting both at the city manager level and at the commission level, is that we continue to invest in growing our brand and growing the services that we provide. And we really wanted to take that very seriously and continue to commit more, more dollars to that. When we look at overall expenses, that's the gist of what we're presenting. In our capital outlay budget, uh, in the 550 fund, you'll see some minimal impact, about 248,000 in new projects for this next year. And those projects are really related to on-the-airfield, like replacing all of the outdated light kits with LED light kits. You'll see us also really investing in traffic control. You all have seen kinda how crazy that TSA line can get. So we wanna really go out there and create a little bit more order with the use of stations and barriers and things of that nature. So you'll see that our budget is pretty simple in that 550, uh, uh, fund. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
What's 550, Liz?
550 is our operating fund for the airport. And so that's where all our ongoing administrative and maintenance costs are, are located. I don't know if there are any questions or if I forgot anything that you heard.
I use names. It's 'cause I'm terrible at numbers.
Okay. So I'll continue to the other funds?
Yeah, but you know what's funny? Is that when it comes to all of the funds and accounts, I do not use numbers, I use names.
All the names.
It's the airport operating.
Thank you.
Moving on to the 552 fund, which is our PFC fund, our passenger facility fund.
Thought you were ribbing me.
Yes.
This is 2552.
You keep going, Liz, you keep going.
552.
I can talk with you.
Keep going, keep going.
I can stop, I can keep going.
Go.
Our passenger facility fund starts with a really healthy fund balance for next year, about 6.4 million. Keep in mind that this is the 450 that we collect for every ticket salesman that originally is out of MFP. Of that 6.4, we, uh, remember that we, um, assigned some of that towards debt service, uh, fund, about 644,000. And then the rest is assigned to our CIP fund. And so we are able to utilize those dollars to offset local match or some of the federal funding that we receive. And so that's kind of what you'll see in that fund. At the end of the day, after we, um, deduct that local match and after we deduct that debt service payment, we end next year with about a 2.3 million dollar fund balance. We don't wanna keep it any bigger than that because we don't want FAA saying we can no longer collect it. When you have excessive amount of dollars in that fund, they very well can take that away from us. So we continue to work very closely with FAA to continue to fund that, that program. Any questions on that fund?
Does it make a difference on the, the actual airfare, the amount of the airfare? Or is it by just ticket sales or boarding passengers?
It does, each passenger pays up to $4.50 more on their ticket. It's like a, a ticket tax at the passenger base.
Okay, but if the fare was $200 one, one day and it goes up to 250, is there a difference in revenues for us?
No, it's a flat.
That's what I thought, just, just-
Correct.
It's per ticket sale.
Correct, up to 450. Any questions?
But we don't make any money-
We do.
For higher fares.
No, we don't.
Yes, right.
Correct.
The more boarding, the, the better.
Okay, it, it, it's all right?
And it's a restricted fund, I'm sure you said that.
It's a restricted fund and so-
You can use it for only certain things, yeah.
I'll move on to fund 554, which is our CIP fund, if you all are okay with that. Airport Capital Improvement Fund. So this one is really well-balanced. I mean, you'll see the starting fund balance for next year, 487 dollars. We're really working, um, revenue streams versus liabilities, assets and liabilities. At the end of the day, um, for us, it was really important to show an ambitious, uh, project listing. Not just with FAA, we've really listed what's in our master plan. You'll notice that we have about 51 million dollars in projects. Not all of these projects are federally funded as of yet, but they are all targeted for funding. And so we do have an airport layout plan that identifies all of these projects to FAA so that FAA is fully aware of what our airport is looking to achieve in the next five to 10 years. And just to give you a general idea, of the 51 million dollars that we have for projects, about 55% of that is funded. About 28 million dollars in projects are funded. The one project that is funded completely, that almost completely funded is that runway safety project that we've been working now for multiple years. And so we're happy to report that that moves along for next year. And then about 45% of what we've identified in this 51 million is yet to be funded. And so we're looking to identify about 23 million in new federal funds to complete the listing of all of these projects. I can go through more detail. Again, the only one project that is in the FAA, uh, plan for, or in the FAA, that has an FAA grant assigned to it, is that runway safety area improvement projects. All the other projects that we've listed here are projects that we look to continue to get funding for. And I don't know if anybody has any questions on this.
So the runway safety area that's being contemplated, is that northwest of the airport?
It's, it's throughout and I don't know, Jimmy, do you wanna talk a little bit more about that project?
It's a base project and most of it's addressing the, like, most of it's addressing the wildlife hazard issues that we've had on both sides of the runways, on the 321 of, of northwest and southeast ends. And so we've addressed that through phase one and two. What's coming up on the radar is phase three and four and one of the unfunded, which is 4B, which is some of the interior drainage, uh, systems that we're addressing.
And that's where we're lining, uh, not, some of not all of the drains that's, that are around the perimeter of the airport, right?
Yes.
And that'll get away, that will rid of a lot of vegetation that grows at the bottom of the drains?
Yeah, essentially, we're putting a, a 10 by 5 box at the flow line of the ditch, so raising the flow line so the low flow or is, is below the ripper.
Right.
And then when it, uh, when we get a surge, it surges into the ditch, into the line ditch. There's no work, there's no, uh, opportunity for wildlife to nest.
Because I remember we had a presentation on the number of work strikes about a year or two ago.
Yes, we'd like to remember that one, but yes.
And the cargo ramp construction, is that a project from last year that's being rolled over?
No, it's, uh, well, actually, it's never been fully funded. And so we continue to have it on my list of projects. For us, it was really important to, to identify these projects because we don't want the airlines to leave. We've got no surplus of money, we really don't. We have a shortage of federal dollars to use local match for. And so they need to, you know, fund their, their, their share of the bill.
And this would basically change the, uh, I guess the parking area for the cargo ramp, the asphalt and everything?
They would give us more opportunities, right, for increased, to meet increased demand in cargo.
Any other questions for the board or?
Let me just say a few things on, on a short and long-term things that, that Liz is working on that you may or may not hear in the next few months depending on how it works out. So one is, we're looking at expanding the general aviation area. That is working right now. We're gonna propose that we bid or, or receive bids for potential, uh, general aviation, which we are in need of drastically. Secondly, on the same topic is that we're, so Liz is working with her consultant to look at land for further expansion of the GA. You've been reading and hearing about what's going on in West Laco, that's real. There is a lot of activity in the general aviation in West Laco for small planes and, and there's a big demand for us to have it here. So we're gonna look at something short-term and something long-term. And in addition, uh, she's also got consultants for the longer term of expanding the terminal, including more gates and dream come true for Liz to expand the, the runway and, and possibly add a parallel. So those things are working and probably next year, we're gonna start bringing those long-term projects to you.
And there, and there has been a lot of progress before, just to echo some of what you said in GA. But I think we read in the paper that West Laco is claiming they have the majority of the traffic for GA. They don't, we capture 60% of all GA traffic in the valley and we have about 55% of the home-based aircraft in the valley are Halsted MFP. So that's in comparison to West Laco, Edinburgh and all the commercial airports.
Does that include Brownsville and Harlingen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have 60% of that market?
Of all of that market. So we are the leading GA airport.
We need to be at about 80.
Is one of the factors in that, especially on the GA side, the cost of fuel?
Absolutely, that's always a factor. Uh, we're not really in the fuel business and perhaps it's something that we analyze in the future. It, you know, keeping our airport cost- cost competitive is key in the region where we are so saturated with options.
What is that threshold number for takeoff and landings where?
60,000.
Man, you're reading my mind. It is, right? I thought it was 55,000.
60,000.
65,000, where we start to really, really start getting more concrete on the.
65, we're at 40%. We've got 120,000 operations that we would be at full capacity, and we're at about 40% of that, which is where we should start funding for that.
For the extension. Anything else?
We can, we can look at agencies. Mayor Pro Tem, if you'd like, we have it here in the book, before we go into executive, or we can see it after executive, or we can punt it to another day. But we've got it here, whatever you'd like to do.
Was it, was it on today's agenda to discuss?
No, it is not.
I prefer not to, since the mayor's not here. I'd rather have a question for that.
No problem. Then in that case, we can go ahead and go into executive session, if you would.
So would the Attorney, is there any Attorney's recommendation?
It is, per se, the attorney of my privilege, 550,077, the government code, and 551,111, the government code. Do you recommend you recess to executive session?
Recess to executive session? We're good? Okay. We're returning back from executive session. Mr. City Manager, any action on item two, executive session?
No, sir.
City Attorney?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Same answer.
Okay, no action. Okay, with no action being required or taken on executive session, we adjourn for today's meeting.